Can you do a walk call?
Scott Badger.
Here.
Sarah Campbell.
Here.
Dave Tappo is not here. Frank Van Ash.
Yes.
John Allen.
Here.
Betsy Harding.
Yes.
George Howard.
Here.
Dick Bennett is not here. Larry Seabird.
Here.
Darren Lovett.
Here.
Mike Malick.
No.
And Ray called and said that he would not be able to make the meeting tonight. Just like all regular members are here. Families need agendas? Passes being on the swing?
Most meetings will be helpful.
Is there a motion to accept the minutes?
So.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion, questions, changes? Right, on favor?
Actually, I'm looking at the last question. So I asked for this motion consistent with the settlement of the March meeting. It is just Georgia actively declaring saying he thinks it does, it would.
I guess.
I mean, certainly, Georgia also said that we've changed our agreement of due in the past.
I wasn't at the planning board meeting. But I guess I just would say in general that.
I'm asking whether or not the minutes are at the meeting.
Okay.
I hope it wasn't here.
So what are you asking? I'm sorry, I watched the meeting anyway.
Well, I guess it's a question for George. Whether he felt he said that his proposed amendment was consistent with the settlement expressed at the March meeting.
What I said, Frank, was that whether it's consistent, I said I went back and looked at previous minutes. And things that we said we were going to do in previous minutes, we hadn't. So the fact that it was said in March, then we changed, is consistent to what we have done in the past.
But I think as I think I read this, it seems to be saying that you believe that the proposed motion was consistent with the settlement expressed at the March. I guess I'm reading the March meeting referring to town meeting. Maybe that's my wrong, that's the March planning board meeting. Or actually, it would then be the April planning board meeting.
I should think the important question would be whether it meets what's expressed at the March town meeting.
Well, I'm only questioning whether or not the minutes.
I understand.
What's said, I don't think, I guess if I suggest that this be changed to then say it's consistent with what was said at the April planning board meeting.
Yeah, we're referencing planning board minutes and meetings.
Okay, so is that what you meant, George?
Exactly, exactly. That's why I went back and reviewed the prior minutes.
Well, I'm afraid I won't be able to be here when it's being discussed, but I would hope that the question will be whether it meets the sentiment expressed by voters at the March town meeting.
Well, I think it expressed some of them.
Let's get through the minutes. Are there any other changes, questions? Is there a motion to accept the minutes with the change that March meeting be changed, the word in March meeting be changed to April planning board meeting?
Is that what you wanted, Frank? To change it?
Well, I think that's what.
You asked if it would be consistent with the sentiment expressed at the March meeting. Were you referring to the planning board meeting or to the?
I don't think, I mentioned the meeting, I think I described, I suppose I was referring to April, but I described the decision I thought we made to go forward to try to implement the desires of what we thought the town had voted on in March. And, you know, really try to make what changes we needed to do in the ordinance to more fully implement the bill of course. I'm happy, I guess to answer your question, I'm happy we change it to April planning board meeting.
Okay, fine. I just want to make sure that we're saying what you want.
So do we have a motion to accept the minutes with that change?
Sure.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay. So is there any public comment concerning anything not on the agenda tonight? Okay. So the first item is Teresa Kennett is here to discuss about Washington Valley Housing Coalition.
Good evening, and thank you for entertaining me for just a couple of minutes. As Scott said, I am from the Mount Washington Valley Housing Coalition. We began meeting with community and business leaders some time ago, and it became very clear to us that what would be helpful in talking about housing issues would be to try and quantify the affordability issue that was being experienced by our workforce. So for several months, the coalition gathered data on demographics, housing, employment, income. In addition to that, we also partnered with the Mount Washington Valley Economic Council to administer a region-wide employer survey so that we could try and assess the impact that housing was having on the local economy. This book that I would ask that Darren pass around is the regional analysis of our data gathering in the first half. The second half of the book has information, data by municipality. It is the hope, the Mount Washington Valley Housing Coalition's hope, that you'll be able to use this data as you plan for your community. The bottom line is, as you will read in the front half of the book, the regional analysis, is that we do have a severe affordability issue in Mount Washington Valley. The trend towards second homeownership and upscale single-family homes is really at odds with the needs of our working families who are employed in the businesses that comprise the great majority of our economic base. In addition, an emerging situation that will amplify the need for affordable housing is our aging population. We are getting older faster than the rest of the state and in fact, the rest of the nation. And in fact, the state of Maine, which is the oldest state in the nation presently, aging populations need not only affordable housing, but they need a diversity of options for their housing. These are issues that are being faced by each and every community in Mount Washington Valley. You know, some communities have a more significant need than others, but nevertheless, these issues are pertinent to every single community. Because we know that by working together, we can solve so much more than by working independently, the Mount Washington Valley Economic Council, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Housing Coalition are partnering to provide a framework and a structure for regional collaboration. This structure will allow community leaders to meet, share information about what they're seeing in their local community, look at the regional impact of what's happening locally, examine strategies to help solve issues of future growth, and then identify resources that communities might like to have to help them solve these issues. The sponsoring organizations will provide facilitation for this process. We will seek funding so that the resources that community leaders want, planning boards, boards of selectmen, the resources that they want, will be brought here. There are lots of opportunities for workshops and presentations in the southern part of the state. We understand that that places a hardship on elected officials, who, many of whom have full-time jobs and can't afford to take a day off from work. The benefits of participating in this collaboration are that you do get to network with neighboring towns. You do get to understand what's happening over there. You even get to understand how decisions that you might make here impact the remainder of the valley, and vice versa. It's fair to say that in all of our planning boards and boards of selectmen, there probably is a fair amount of expertise that you can share. There are also opportunities for you to work together to determine the types of resources that you want. In the very end, we want for communities to be able to understand the region. We want to have regional leverage. We want to have regional clout. And the first step toward that is by sitting down at the table together and working together. So I have been passing around my sign-up sheet and look forward to hopefully seeing your name on it. And in the meantime, do you have any questions?
What, have you looked at our affordable housing?
I have. You mean Jackson in particular? So yes, so one of the things about Jackson is that you are aging fast. In fact, you are the second, by way of median age, you are the second oldest community. I know it's not fair to age faster than others, but you are the second oldest community. And I think another telling aspect of that is that you've aged by 8.7 years in the last decade. So what that means is people who, 56% of your homeowners are second homeowners. So probably what's happening is that those people retire, and then they move here. And the other part of that is young people are not moving in. In fact, they probably are moving out if they are leaving their parents' home because they can't afford to live here. The other thing about Jackson is that you do have the highest median family income of all 13 towns. But you have the second lowest weekly wages paid out of this community. Obviously, that's because of the type of industry we have. 75% of our economic base is comprised of that very type of industry, hospitality, recreation, and retail. And so we understand that that is an important aspect of our economy, and what we need to do is figure out a strategy by which we can maintain that as well as grow our economy in other ways. You know, the aging population of Mount Washington Valley does provide an economic driver if we plan well. Aging populations tend to have more money. They tend to need certain services. If we are thinking ahead about what that is, we'll be more well-prepared to make the most of that.
A perfect example of that, I think, a few years ago, we had a meeting right here in town where we were talking about the need for workforce housing. And Peter Benson was one of the speakers there, talking about the fact that the youngest person in the fire department at that time was 48 or 49, and the oldest one was over 65. And we all know that there aren't many 65-year-olds who are going to climb up a ladder to the second or whatever floor and rescue a child. We need to be certain that our housing, the ability for Jackson to provide housing for lower-income people, or workforce people, or at least young families, that we are able to make some sort of ordinance that would encourage that to happen. We've tried, maybe because of the economy, we haven't had any takers on constructing according to our workforce housing ordinance. We also have, I think, a pretty good provision for accessory units that might encourage use by people who can't afford maybe to purchase a regular house, a single-family house in Jackson. But at this point at least, it's not enough to be able to turn around who's actually buying and renting here. We're not getting enough young people that we might want. Another way where we see that is in the school population, where if we can't keep up the numbers, there are going to be people arguing that what do we need a school for if we only have, you know, a smaller and smaller amount of children? And it's really important for many people here to keep a local school.
And in the past, the school has cycled, you know, up to 60 or so and down into the 20s and back up and down. I mean, are there changes? You know, what drives that change in child population in town? You know, if we're in a situation where we're just making it harder and harder and harder for people to raise families in Jackson, live in Jackson, to move into Jackson as a young couple, then why do we see that the child population go up and down rather than just trend down?
There is no question that school age population is a cyclical thing that goes like this. There's also been quite a few studies to prove that young families don't necessarily clog up the works of the school department. In other words, for every young family, there is typically less than one child that's contributed to the school enrollment. But in Mount Washington Valley, because we have that added competition of the second homeowner, and because we do have, generally speaking, in all of our communities, perhaps with the exception of Conway, very large lot minimums, very, very extensive road frontage ordinances, we make it hard for young families to live here. So that is not something that I see being just a matter of a cyclical thing. That is something that is continuing on a momentum that if we do not at least examine it to say, is this going to be a sustainable way for our communities to thrive, then we've done less than we should be doing.
But I guess my question is, given that there have been periods where the child population has risen, was there something going on at that time that allowed more young families to move into town?
It's that we're aging. When you look at Jackson in 2000, our average age was 45.6.
Stop answering the question.
Well, hang on just a second. I think this may answer it. 45.6 was an average age in 2000, and in 2010, the average age was 54.3. Not a lot of 54-year-old people have grammar school age kids.
I understand.
Why is that happening?
Well, I understand why the, you know, the adult population is getting older in Jackson, why the child population is decreasing, but over the decades, it's gone up and down and up and down. And I guess my question is, there seem to be points where, you know, I mean, shortly after I graduated from Jackson Grammar School, it was trending down, got into the 20s, and then it rebounded back up into the 60s or so, I think. So my question is, what allowed families to move in then? And is there something we can do now to recreate that?
That? Well, I will tell you that what started to happen here in the 70s and has increased, it's ever-increasing since that time, is that Mount Washington Valley as a whole, and probably Jackson in particular, because it's beautiful, became a very popular place for second homeowners to buy property. That competition, generally speaking, communities provide for the people who work in them. The supply and demand and the market doesn't ask for more than the local worker can pay. We are very different. That second homeowner population really does impact the availability of land for young families and the price of it. So I would say, and we're not alone in that, there are other places in parts of the country where this is happening, you know, in Colorado, in a big way. A lot of communities, as I do my research, I see that a lot of communities have done surveys, have done analysis similar to the ones we have done, to figure out how it is we are going to maintain our economy, grow our economy, maintain the base that we have, and provide for our workers. And that's something that the Economic Council, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Housing Coalition want to provide a structure for. I don't have all the answers for you here tonight, but part of what is very much impacting that cyclical nature of young families being able to live here is that second homeowner industry, if you will.
Right, but again, I can see how that drives things in the wrong direction, or at least the direction that, but what drives things back up? Is it just the economy?
Young families being able to move to your, you know, you have to admit that anybody would love to live in Jackson.
So is it said way that in better economic times, young families have more means to move into a town like Jackson?
Well, a good page to look at, I think, that goes along with what Teresa's saying is page 26 in this booklet. It's really interesting to me that it talks about the total number of housing units in Jackson. This is in 2010. Total number of housing units were 1,009. And then if you look at the bottom chart on that page, it talks about the number of second homes are 570. So more than half, the total number of homes, it would appear, are second homes. Very few of those are occupied by.
Well, the second homes there, I mean, I was looking here, is there, is there a vacancy rate anyplace?
There is a vacancy rate.
It's listed here.
Excluding second homes?
It's listed at the top, the top of the chart, I believe, that will show that. Occupied units, vacant units, occupied.
But that includes all the second homes. But I mean, one measure of availability of housing would certainly be the vacancy rate.
That's right. That measures availability, but it doesn't measure affordability.
Agreed, but I mean.
And so, one of the issues, or not issues, but one of the arguments generally is that in a time where there is a lot of inventory on the market, housing becomes more affordable. But there is a chart in there that describes to you what the, I'm going to leave the recipes right here for whomever, that describes to you what the median price of a house was versus the median income of our workers. So when we talk about availability only, you'll see a high vacancy rate. But when we talk about affordability, you'll see, one of the reasons the vacancy rate is high is that the people who work here can't afford to buy that home.
Well, the rental units typically are less expensive.
Well.
Typically.
Relatively speaking.
Well, that bottom chart.
And, you know, one of the measures of availability, I mean, one of the measures of the cost, or one of the that drives the cost, is the vacancy rates in the rental units. Do we, is that available?
What are you asking for? The vacancy rate of the rental?
Yes.
Yeah. One of the issues for that vacancy rate, and one of the reasons I didn't include it in the booklet, is that that rate, as published by the census, is taken on April 1 of 2010. And so there are lots of seasonal rentals that are vacant because people are done with their winter rental, and they've not yet started their summer rental. So it's very difficult to look at a vacancy rate in Mount Washington Valley and say that there's plenty of rent on the horizon. There may be, but people who work here can't afford those seasonal rental rates.
Having been one of those people that grew up here and had to rent, and was one of those workers in restaurants for 37 years, there were two rental markets. And there's the seasonal rental market for tourists, and when I looked for a rental unit, you didn't bother to look at condos or, they're completely out of, so in Jackson, what's available, there's a lot of those available. But you'll find, like, the first house that you go through the covered bridge, there's six kids living in it, and that's the only thing available to a worker. And all six of those young kids are all in their 20s, work right here in the village. They serve us coffee at the bakery, they, you know, so. And that's, I think, what we're talking about, is because of our industry here, there's this whole huge population of young people that have to fill these jobs. And if you had noticed, in the summertime and in the wintertime, a lot of those jobs are being filled by Europeans, Asians, you know, and South Americans, because that's all we can find. You can't, there are no young people to fill that many jobs. There are an awful lot of jobs, you know, from this type of industry, but they're seasonal jobs, you know? And every year, I would keep a job, and I would, every, there were no jobs. Everyone lays you off, oh boy, immediately, you'd go through the same thing every single year. You could work through the summer and be, and have a good job straight to October 20. And then even in the restaurant where I worked, and I was a head chef, I'd be laid off.
Right.
And, you know, and I was their head chef, but they only needed me three nights a week until Christmas week. And so this is what the workforce here in our valley contends with. And, you know, so that, so it's a, we're in a very unique situation being in a tourist area. You know, there's just a lot of jobs that have to be filled, but they're all $10 an hour jobs with no benefits.
Jerry?
Scott, I'd like to point out, I mean, about that cycle that you're talking about, how it goes up and down, I think one of the things that's going to disrupt that in a very scary way is the availability of buildable land. And I don't want to point that she made earlier to go lost in this conversation, and that the only way we can change the availability of buildable land is to take a look at the zoning orders and see if you can change the zoning orders to make more land that's currently available, available. We may find that there's no way to do that, but without taking a look at it, what she suggested earlier is at least take a look at. We can see there isn't something that we can do to our zoning ordinance to make more affordable land more available.
And I would say that there certainly is. I mean, whether we have the will to do it or not is the question. We can reduce frontage, we could change, you know, not use the high-intensity soil studies.
But I think that that's, Jackson's pretty limited geographically, and I think that the only thing that we can really look at in a big-picture kind of way is what she mentioned earlier.
We've actually already changed the high-intensity soil usage. If you're coming in with workforce housing, you can go by the states.
I understand. In general, I appreciate Jerry's point that, you know, but in general, there's the balance of, you know, I think most Jackson residents would prefer, everything else being ideal, to keep development down, to not have the town become overdeveloped in any of a variety of ways. But on the other hand, what do we have for a real, you know, for a town if we don't have kids in town? if we don't have kids in town, we don't have, you know...
Well, the sustainability of not.
Right, so it's a tough balance because if you have two very competing desires, both of which are probably fairly townwide, so how you...
Right. Well, I think really what we're, what we're, the sponsoring organizations that... Actually, we each had it in our strategic plan to foster some regional collaboration, are just asking community leaders, elected officials, to at least look at what is and look at what maybe could be. It's easy, or I shouldn't say it's easy, but planning boards, boards of selectmen, have a full, you know, plate of what they have to do. They are rarely provided the opportunity to meet with other communities, to examine potential solutions, to know what there is out there to help them grapple with these issues. In every single town in our valley, the voters have the final say. So it isn't as though this is a process for you to make changes in the zoning ordinance. This is really not that process. It is the process for you to learn from other communities, learn from available resources that you identify that you want. And that's what this is about. You know, lots of regions who are successful in growing their economic base, quality of life for their families, are thought to be well endowed regions physically. They just are. That's not true. My research tells me that the regions that do well are those that work together. In Mount Washington Valley, we have not yet done that. And so this is a new frontier for us. I think it'll be a very productive thing for the region, and I think it'll bring very good things back to each and every community. So, how's my sheet?
I think it's pretty well filled out.
Well, that's exciting. And I thank you. I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
And I should have said that the initial convening will be in April. So I will be communicating with you with the information that you've provided to me on this to keep you informed along the way. Thank you.
Great, thanks. All right, so next item, we're doing a statistical review. Tony?
Hi, my name is Tony Simone. I've been around the valley for over forty years. And this is my boy Jenny. She's gonna be, she's got a whole lot of... I'm presenting something to your suggestions or ideas. Sorry. I own land with my brothers, my two brothers. I'm Tony, my brother Eugene and Gerald, we both own this land. We own it for forty years. And just so you know where it is, this is Route sixteen from the covered bridge, about a mile and a half north on Route sixteen. There's a chunk of land that abuts Eagle Mountain Road. Did you see that? There's Eagle Mountain Road. This is Ridge Road, and it intersects and goes into Adams Road. So if you know where that area is, this is the land I'm talking about. It's forty acres, and abuts Route sixteen. And also, it above abuts the Wayville National Forest. I have to say, I'm embarrassed to say that I just recently heard about the Upper Saco Valley Land Trust. I was in the bank one day and they had a display, I was kind of interested, I read it. And over the years, my brothers and I have been thinking about developing this. Back in nineteen eighty-nine, we came to the board and it was approved for a ten lot subdivision. Soon we get that approval, stock market crashed. We've been holding onto it for twenty years, twenty more years. We're getting older.
Didn't the subdivision actually take place?
Upon?
Did the subdivision?
No, I stopped it at that point.
It was a conditional?
A conditional, yeah. It's conditioned on three things, which we'll go into some other time. But anyway, we held on to it. You know, they give it to our children or grandchildren or whatever. We're all getting older, my brothers and I. Listen to Teresa. I mean, this is like, what a segue this is. So basically, what my, just wait, I'll just give you some demographics here. Basically, this is twenty acres here. There's two parcels. It's twenty acres here, parcel R twelve fifty-five, and there's forty acres in R twelve fifty-six. Okay? And the frontage, road frontage, is on sixteen hundred feet on Eagle Mountain Road, another four hundred and sixty feet along Route sixteen. Okay? And this piece of chunk of land I do not own. And I own up to the backside of the Wayville National Forest and DuSage on the other side. What I proposed to the land trust, and I met with William Abbott, I met with Dexter, the Walker Land, with Linda Como, Como. And we came up with a schematic of what they might, what I would like to give to them. And hopefully we can do this. There's a lot line adjustment that gives them up to forty-three to forty-five acres of land. And then I would subdivide three lots from that, each one for my brothers and I. The reason I'm coming to you is because one of the lots is a little odd. These two are no problem. This one here is one that has, I have an access entrance off of Adams Road. It's a sixty-foot right away to go into this lot. And it's taken me two years to get a septic approval. I finally got it this past July to build a house lot up there. Of course, that was predating on, in fact, I used to own all the land. So right now, what I'm looking to do is to, I'd like to give this land to the Upper Saco Valley Land Trust and to have this. But if I can't get this lot number three approved at some point, then it's not gonna go.
Do you have the footage on three?
I have, I have all footage, yeah.
Now, just so that it's clear, I spoke with Tony a little bit before about this, but lot three, it's no hard to see on the map, but lot three extends over the top of the piece of property that Tony does not own. Because there's a frontage issue if Tony was looking to subdivide and create lot three, just as it's kind of shown at the very end. There's a frontage issue there, you know, without building a town standard road into it.
So the survey, I'm using the York folks up in Brown on this, and we came up with different scenarios. This seemed to be the best one. I mean, this lot line can be different, can be figured in a lot of different ways to make it look more...
But lot number three is one contiguous parcel. It's just connected by a very thin corner.
Do you have, what is the frontage on the little triangle piece of lot?
That's, every inch here is, every inch is a hundred feet. So I got about two hundred feet here, at least. And I got a lot, how many there, there, whatever. There is something in your, this goes back twenty some odd years. There is something in, I believe, in the audience that say that I have frontage on Route sixteen, there's a, there is some way of formula that allows you to have a different frontage on a lot. But I don't remember it anymore, but that's not, that's not material.
But in doing this subdivision, you'd be giving up...
Sure, exactly, yes. So basically, that's it. It's as simple as it goes. Just so you know, this is what the original one looked like. It's the same lots.
Yeah, they're back here.
This is the one that we went up with in eighty-nine. It's ten house lots, with a common septic system. I came back two years ago, somebody might have been on the board, I don't remember. But I came in to say, oh, I was gonna take away this lot and put it up there and still can keep the same subdivision. And that's what I've been doing, been looking for a lot to build my own house on, my own house on over here for the past two years. So that's what's in the engineering is still viable. When I came two years ago, this particular board said, forget the common septic system problem, just expand the lots, make them bigger, so each lot have its own septic system on. You know, so...
So at this point, you just want the three lots?
That's all. I don't want to give it over. I talked to Teresa about this, but, I mean, this is the kind of land that she's looking for. At the same. I just, I developed land in the past. I have not been successful. And I refuse to have Jenny go through it again. So I've been, so basically, my brothers and I, and I'm not in the area, so they look to me to develop the land, and I don't want to do it anymore. So this was a good option. The option, and to be very honest to you, the land trust will give us some tax credit. I divided among my two brothers, so it's not a lot. But we'll have at least a lot in Jackson, and I always wanted to be Jackson.
So the problem we're seeing then is lot three, it's getting newer driveway into that.
Oh, I have the driveway in. This has all been, this has all been, it's all been approved. I have the wetlands permit. I have the septic system already approved. So this lot is, isn't built, it's a functional power chunk of off. You come to your folks.
Except for the frontage.
Yeah.
Except for the frontage.
So that's why this odd bald piece here.
Can we waive frontage as a subdivision? Is that a...?
It's a...
I don't think so.
I argue that...
It's contiguous, I mean, basically, I guess I can make this lot line like this.
There's no, I don't think there's a requirement that he used the frontage for, the contiguous frontage for where his driveway is, so I'm not sure. What is the problem here?
The problem, I wanted to make sure you folks, if I came back and...
There is no problem.
But I came back another year, so I was like, hey, I want to do this sooner. I might do it in subdivision sooner and just go in and get these three approved. And there'd be no problem, this is already, this lot is, I already have a septic system on this lot. This one is no problem. This is where the original ten houses we're gonna have be located via the septic system, so there's no problem with this lot. I need just go in and do a test pit here. Once I get a test pit here, then the surveying company can come back to you folks and say, it's a three lot subdivision. This lot, these two lots will have a common driveway that will come off of the Eagle Mountain Road and serves both these lots on the underside here. So that's basically it. If you see no problems with that, then I can go forward with the Saco Valley.
It's hard to go through everything in the zoning ordinance and subdivision ranks that quickly.
No, no, no. If I, if I can, if I sense that you have no problem with this, then I could come to you with a lot line adjustment. Because this is, this is the lot right here. This is one lot, and this is another lot. So I can come back and say, here's a lot line adjustment. Upper Saco Valley Trust now has this land. I now have fifteen acres that I can either keep in current use or come to you with a subdivision if you want.
So you're considering doing a lot line adjustment first, and then the subdivision?
I mean, that's subdivision. I'd suggest that, you know, the zoning ordinances or subdivision regulations can change. So if you don't do the subdivision at about the same time you do the lot line adjustment, who knows what the rules might be when you come, when you want to actually do the subdivision.
That's true. I appreciate that comment.
Yeah, but if I were you, I'd probably, I mean, if you felt certain of going that way, I'd probably do both things at about the same time. Or at least, you're running that as...
I mean, really, if, and I appreciate your comment because I would probably now consider that as doing it sooner. But in order to, for me to get the benefit of the possible tax benefit, I have to get this transferred to them before the end of the year. So a lot line adjustment would have to come back to you this coming December, which I don't think should be a problem.
I don't see any.
If I can get that lot line adjustment approved, that they get the land, I have this, I stop the, I stop the cost of the subdivision.
Now, if you were unable to do the subdivision, would you still do the lot line adjustment?
No, I'd go back, I'd go back to this. I'll wait, I'll wait for it someday.
We'll talk to Teresa.
I mean, really, I just, I'm having a hard time already convincing my brothers that this is the best way to go. You know, they're looking at it from forty years, taxes, about, I just don't know if it'll be worth it for me. The reason for that...
The reason why I ask that is that, you know, I had a glance. I don't think there's anything jumping out as a problem in doing the subdivision as you've drawn it, but without actually going through, you know, an actual subdivision application, you know, with all the mapping and everything else that's required. You know, it's certainly possible that something will pop up that, you know, that's quite a problem. That's why I ask, you know... So you would be, personally, I don't think you're taking much of a gamble, but I think you are taking a bit of a gamble doing the subdivision with the expectation of being able to do a, I'm sorry, doing a lot line adjustment with the expectation that you'd be able to do a subdivision on later...
Well, the only thing that...
And as Frank said, it also, it's certainly possible that something changes in their zoning ordinance such that what could be done today won't, couldn't be done the same way.
My application came to the table next month. I'm, I would be under those guidelines. So anything that changes in the zoning later would not affect that application.
Well, I think it's dependent...
I'm assuming, I'm just...
No, I'm not sure in general workshop way.
Right, if...
A change in midstream.
Yeah, well, if we do, if we do a lot line adjustment next month. So now you have two lots, and then you decide to do a subdivision two years from now. Any changes in the zoning ordinance...
Oh, absolutely. Oh, yeah, I understand.
Reflect on subdivision will...
Well, hearing what you're saying right now and hearing your comment, I have to really think seriously about not...
Wait. Well, we, you know, we don't have anything on our plate right now that would impact something like this. So you would have at least a year.
Sure, that's fine, that's no problem. Because, and speaking to the surveyor, this is, this is already perked and approved. This one guaranteed because it was perked, it went timed for ten four-bedroom homes. So I should be able to get one septic system on it. And in fact, that the line is not further over, which I could do, put this line over and just take a little bit more land from there. I could probably get it, I could probably use that engineering as well. So there's no, there's no problem with correcting, which is my biggest concern. The issue is just the odd shaped lot coming off of Eagle Mountain Road in here with the driveway with two lots. Those are the only thing that I could possibly see that would be...
The only thing we might do is, in your agreement with Upper Saco Valley Land Trust, is, you know, have some sort of agreement that they'll do some house lot line adjustments with you if necessary to facilitate this...
Yeah, I think they, I think they would have...
I imagine they would find some way to do it.
Actually, you probably can't speak for them, but...
No, but it doesn't sound like it's out of the question.
Yeah, hope, just so you know, I mean, I'm not speaking on a term here, but then you can hope. Because, the reason why they're interested in this land is because of the proximity to the National Forest. You know, and making, this would be one of those rare situations where they could put a parking lot down below and have a, you know, spruce mountain back or connect over to Cogged Knatch.
And lot three, that little triangle thing has enough frontage, has to be...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I have sixty here already.
Right. Does it have to be continuous frontage? Well, I don't know that you have any on the writing piece.
Well, this is, this is driveway, so it's sixty feet.
It needs, the frontage needs to be on a town standard road.
This is the town road. Adams Road.
That's true.
Adams Road. That's why I wrote this in, this is an old map. Adams Road was up to a cul-de-sac, this is the town road. So that's sixty feet, abuts the town road, so that's sixty. So all I can need is a hundred and forty.
Is it, is our frontage contiguous, or is it...
That's what I was thinking.
I'm not sure if it's... Whether it has to be contiguous or not.
I don't think so.
Then, just as my question, just for my knowledge, is that something like we could hand him a checklist and bring it to Bergeron or who's ever doing the work and have him go through the checklist and...
Yeah, I think...
I have that checklist.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, Betsy, Betsy Ryan.
Good, yeah, and this way you can see if you're gonna run into any problems.
I might consider moving this line over a little bit so you can get that guarantee of a hundred there, you know, and then get all those other lines over a little bit.
Yeah, I think it's...
That way it might be more feasible to...
John, according to this map, it's one foot, one inch equals a hundred feet. So we're looking at about two hundred.
Two hundred, you might have it, but even if that be a minor adjustment.
Sixteen hundred feet to deal with. It's like, I can see the problem. The biggest concern I had is the, just the oddity of it.
Right.
You know?
Doesn't say that's good, square.
You know, but me, when the surveyor and I both sat down, he said, you know, this is... know, this is the, and this is why we did it this way, to, to give as much to the Upper Saco Valley as possible. And what's the National Forests, the National Forests.
I don't think the name of the sentence has to be contiguous.
Well, you can interpret the word into the definition of frontage is, uh, the width of a lot measured along its count, common boundary with a class five or better public road or planning board approved private road right away. So if you can have your little triangular piece, just make that two hundred feet, then it wouldn't, it wouldn't be an issue.
Now, it's the same road.
Yeah.
Or is that, I don't know if that's a real difference, but it's, it's not the same as having a piece of frontage on one road and a second piece of frontage on the second road.
Right.
So even though the frontage isn't contiguous, the road anyway is.
Well, Hanson's property does that around mine. They have the frontage above and on the, on Sugar's Lane beside it.
That's why I'm here.
That's why I'm here.
There, there, there is a, a question here, I guess, so.
Well, it says the width of a boundary, it doesn't say it's contiguous, it's just the width has to be.
Where you're selling, make sure you get two hundred on that.
Well, I'll have.
Is that common?
Just a beat here.
Sixteen hundred feet there, I think I can give you two hundred.
Yeah, that's a.
That's not a problem. The, the biggest thing is I wanted to give them as much, I want to give them as much down here.
That's a good job.
That's a good job. I want to give them as much down here, but they want, maybe they don't want it, but they're looking at probably putting a parking lot down.
Yeah.
In the future. So I can steal, I can steal whatever little piece I need, if I can have one.
And you're just, 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 uh, this has nothing to do with your lot here, but it has something to do with Upper Saco Valley. You heard this through, just being in the bank one day?
I've, I've been, I've been away for about thirteen years.
Yeah, okay, I've read about you for years.
And I went to the bank one day and I saw this, this flight. And I picked up the brochure just to say, I want, I want to find what's going on in the valley here. So I'm, been in and out. And I, I read about the possibility of getting a tax credit on land donated. And this to me was, was advantageous for two reasons. One, the tax credit was the biggest one, to get me out of development. I don't want to go. And this does that.
Yeah.
And so, uh.
Well, it shows that advertising helps.
And, and thus, and another thing too is just that, this is the, the benefactor part of it too. Just to, I, I love Jackson, I really. My first house was here in Jackson, it was written nineteen sixty-nine. So I, and I bought this land when my love was to come back and live here. But, uh, things change. And, uh, I'm now building a house in the bottom next to my daughter. My daughter had the pole. And so, but I'm on the Jackson side of the bottom. Jackson's right there, bottom is, I feel, still feel comfortable, right?
Upper bar and lower Jackson.
You can't always, it's not Tom Harber, Tom Harber. Uh, you can't have always your dreams, but anyway, this would make, uh, make it really great that I can have, each one of us can have our own lot. They can, they can give it to their kids or whatever.
No, it's wonderful to protect that land, thank you.
But I also feel bad for like Theresa, Tony, what's going on?
Well, that, that really gets to the, that balance challenge, you know? All of us here in Jackson would love it, the rest of Jackson was just undeveloped and what you. As soon as possible, but I think all of us here too would not want to lose the community aspect of Jackson and, and the more we become a second home lookout and.
It's got to be, years back, um, many years back, I considered doing the same thing with just making that a workforce housing. Reality is, the numbers don't work.
Yeah.
I cannot put this in, I cannot develop this for under half a million dollars. And I own the land. Because the surveyors eat you up and the land, the road cost, and then before you know it, you're still, you're still charging people seventy, eighty thousand dollars for a lot, you got to, just to be cool. So it's.
Should we do some kind of PUD that's also affordable that you, we don't have PUDs yet, so.
We don't, we don't hold that any longer. I think we got it.
I just, I just want to have a discussion with you and I, I get, I, this is what I'm hearing is that you have no problem with the lot line adjustment for next month. And then if I'm smart, I would go quickly and start doing the subdivision approval with the two hundred feet there to show you that's done. And I don't see any problems.
Can they be done simultaneously? The applications submitted first for the adjustment, then the?
They can't, they probably can't get everything done on the, uh, the subdivision in time.
Yeah.
I missed that question. I was asking if you could do the two things simultaneously.
Oh, it'd be great.
The applications, they're saying do the vantage line adjustment first and then have that, so it's, it's already going to work.
Question's how many times do you want to meet in December? So you can have it done at the end. And assuming it's a summer tax.
Yeah, yeah.
And when do you meet in December?
Second, two, yeah, boy, I think, I think, second.
Theoretically, you could bring.
I'm not talking about approval, I'm just saying, like, I get this, so he wants, he did these.
I mean, the lot line adjustment sort of comes first.
Right.
And suppose, I mean, I think, I think there's probably materials that would take Tony more time to gather for a subdivision, so I don't know that even Tony could bring a subdivision now.
Critical time is a margin if there was a, a meeting that was.
Change, yeah.
Yeah, I think that the issue more is there's something in, in this that none of us are seeing right now that.
We, we just aren't spotting, yes. Something like septic and well gradients or.
Having been, so committed, so connected to this for so many years, and I've been to the planning boards enough times and the surveyors, the only issue they saw was you feeling comfortable with that odd line. And everything else, the septic approvals, don't see any problem with that. Coming along with a Eagle Mountain Road with a, with a driveway to connect two, two driveways, not a problem.
Now, you were here two years ago.
Yeah.
I forget, what was it you wanted then?
I wanted, I wanted to, I was, I was going to subdivide, hold again.
Now we don't want you wanting to get out of the subdivision.
I was going, and, and this is, this is sad, this is.
You brought this back before, right?
This is sad, it really is.
Quite a long time ago.
I came here because we're coming back, we're going to retire, and I wanted to live in Jackson. So I'm going to put a house right up here, I know the land, I walked it, so went to that dawn, and they started the, the, the map, the protest and all that. Come to find out, the Muhentra Co-op has a telephone pole dead center in the middle of my driveway. I went to them and said, move your pole. No, we don't move the pole. You've been waiting to want to tell us. How much would it cost to move the pole? Ten thousand dollars. I said, it's crazy. So, so, Don, who's going to go to one side or the other side of the pole? That's not easy because guide wires were going both sides of the pole. So make a long story short, I had to go to, I had to go to the left side of the pole. There's enough land to put a driveway there. The left side of the pole has, has some button. So I had to, I had to go through the whole application of, so that was a year. And I don't know what happened in between. Another year went by, really, a whole year went by. I didn't get the septic pool until January, uh, July of this, of this year. And I finally had, I had the driveway permit, I had the wetlands permit, I had the septic system and the layout for where the house would be. But in the meantime, you know, things changed. So I was, I was going to still keep owning the land, all I was going to do is take this lot away and just make that little lot.
Frank?
Okay.
Yes, would it make any sense for Tony, when he goes to do the subdivision, to, to bring in a subdivision with Lot Three as just being the part in the corner? Get a denial from the planning board and then go to the ZBA for a variance in frontage? Now, if he didn't get it, then he could go to Plan B at that point. Is there, is that worth?
Well, it, this shows the ZBA would rat the variance just for the thirty, sixty feet frontage rather than.
I'm, I'm not assuming anything, I'm just saying, is, is there enough of a chance that that might happen that it'd be worth going that route?
I, I hate being put on the spot. I, 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 I mean, I thought the solution he's offering with the.
Well, it just is such a weird shape.
Well, it is, but, I mean.
It works.
It, it works.
The only thing Tony showed you, there's a, another.
Oh, jeez. You don't want to.
I, I'll.
Oh, thanks.
I didn't go, I didn't want to go into this because it's been back then.
Yeah, I think it was a reason.
I owned it for forty years, even before I owned it, I knew about this. Arthur Doucette and Brooks Dodge, uh, Brooks Dodge owned all this thing all the time. And, and he had falling out. And there's this spike line that goes from here all the way to the back of the blocks, not to allow anyone to, not to allow.
So that very slim triangle.
Yes, it's a small, it's a little piece down there.
Yeah.
That's part of the slot. Okay, so one foot deal that would not allow anyone access to just that land. So they own two hundred and thirty acres of land.
And they can't get to it.
And they can't get to it.
They've been trying for years.
I, I'm not into that.
Yeah.
This is, this is back in the sixties now, you know? And I knew about it when I bought it, but it was like, okay.
Try just to think if there's any way.
So, so what you have is this kind of a lot line. You know, it's kind of a.
A lot.
Yeah, and the.
The issue is it's a hard, it's a, I find it's a hardship. And that, that, that there's another feasible way for him to do it. We were talking about ZBA, but the fact that there's no feasible way to do it would, it's, it's kind of hard to argue somehow he's being unfairly viewed versus everybody else.
No, it's almost more of a hardship for the town to have a very odd, because.
Yeah.
It's, it's not a hardship, but it's just.
Well, if you don't, if you don't see any major things, I don't, I know the, I'll, I'll talk to the surveyor, if there are any, we'll talk about it in December. Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
See somebody again.
You see him.
You want to copy this?
We could use some of those brochures now for like the conservation commission or the office or.
Thank you.
Because that's what I would say to you, kind of in an email, was, you know, if we could advertise it better.
Seriously?
Yeah. Reach out to someone.
All right, so, building code. First, a couple of things. First thing I want to do is, I don't know, Sarah, whether you went through this last meeting or not, but just to give you a, a calendar or schedule, it's a bit, or someone under, so you have that in front of us. In any case, I believe it's in January that we would need to, uh, that we would need to have the first public hearing if we anticipated that there might be two public hearings. And I would say that that's the valid interpretation. So the, the first meeting would need to be in January, no later than. Uh, no later than January twenty-first, okay? So sort of backtracking from there.
That's the last date for the last hearing or the last date for the first hearing?
That's the last date for the first hearing. And then it's, uh, February fourth would be the last date to hold the second hearing. Because that means that if we did have a second hearing, it would have to occur prior to our regular planning board meeting in February.
What day would the regular February be?
Wouldn't be till the fourteenth because the first is on a Friday, so it's Valentine's So in any case, I guess my thought is that what we really ought to be striking for is to have something that we can vote on as a fly, as a draft to bring to the public hearing at the next meeting, the December meeting.
Well, we have a draft right now, which everybody has voted on.
Whether we do it now or, there are a couple, the next thing I want to go over is some, I, I sent the draft to, I have copies here. I sent the draft to Tara Bamford at the North Country Council. And she, she had a couple of, sort of, really minor suggestions, so if you want to. So just to go through them quick, uh, first one, I guess it's in paragraph one. And just when we say shall appoint, we felt that we should make it clear that that means higher contract, share, and that is valid. There are a variety of ways to utilize a building inspector. I don't know if we want to add judicial language to inflating that shall appoint statement And then she had some questions as to, obviously, at the end of that first, first, she, she actually had some questions, so what was meant in one fifty-five that she. Do you want to go through all of these first and then go back and consider what changes we want to make or do we want to hang on?
Do we have a written final draft of that last?
Yep.
Is that these years?
Is that them?
Yeah, this is the, this is the draft from last meeting.
Okay.
Pass that on.
Does anybody need one? Everyone need one?
They're all the same thing, right?
Yeah. Yeah. Do you need one? Need you give one?
So in, in our paragraph one, two and four. So it's the second sentence, the board selectmen shall appoint a building inspector who shall manage the zoning ordinance. And the question is, should we leave it as shall appoint, if we feel that that's clear enough, or should we, should we say instead, I guess, something like?
I don't, I don't understand why she doesn't think that's clear enough. Shall appoint, just, we have a question here. I like the idea of hiring and contracting, because we were talking about this in our meeting prior about whether we want to go with a town employee versus a private contractor, and at least that leaves it open for us to choose.
Either or.
Either or.
What do you say, appoint?
If you say, if you say hire or contract.
As opposed to saying appoint.
As opposed to saying appoint. Hire or. At least it gives us that flexibility to change our mind from, you know, whether we want.
Well, I think the intent was shall appoint would give us.
Give us, then, yeah, I don't see why it doesn't.
The question is, does it not, does it not clearly give us that?
I mean, are we going to hire them as a town employee, employee, or are we going to hire them, or, or contract them as a private contractor? That was what we were talking about today.
And appoint.
That doesn't really matter, you're just, you're saying it's just have the ability to appoint and how you, what they are is different. It's just that you're the board that hires and fires.
Right.
I think Tara just wanted to make sure that by, by saying shall appoint, we're not constricting ourselves in some, or restricting ourselves in some way.
It's just saying that that's, the board of selectmen has that responsibility or right to, to do it. I think that's what I'm hearing.
To get the guy on board.
Yeah.
And sharing with another town is also a possible.
And she's not sure if she should change that either, reading this. I'm not totally sure what the specific.
It probably won't make that much difference.
Yeah, it probably won't. And she, you know, maybe just ask the LGC. You have to run this by the attorney and LGC anyway, right? Or?
Well.
The attorney.
The attorney, I think that's a good idea. Although I would hope that the North Country Council would be about as good. But we will, I just did not want to incur the expense of going back and forth, back and forth. I felt like.
Get it best we, best we can.
This is, this doesn't limit you of how.
No, it doesn't.
You're the body that does it.
No, I'm either way on that one. I don't see where shall appoint is a problem.
Well, unless someone feels strongly that we ought to make that change.
And then if you find out from the attorney that we should.
Yep, yep. Paragraph 14. Okay, I think what she's saying there is that basically they can simply refuse to allow someone into the building.
Because you have to get the permission.
Right. And in 155A7, let me see if I can find that, I didn't read it. It basically says that the town can issue a warrant to enter that building if the property owner refuses.
Several ways you can read that to give, well, you know, whoever's coming to inspect, it would be nice for him to tell the people he's coming to inspect and that the reasonable hour and it's convenient for them with their work schedule, as opposed to giving him the option to say, no, I don't want you to come.
But I think there's legal recourse if someone objects to.
That's, that's maybe what she's referring to.
I think she is.
Yeah. So 155A7, and she refers to section three.
Three, yes.
The local enforcement agency appointed to enforce the state building code shall have the authority to inspect all building structures, construction sites, and other places in, in its jurisdiction. If consent for such inspection is denied or not reasonably obtainable, the local enforcement agency may obtain administrative inspection warrant under, by that.
So is it to include all that in this then?
No, it's in state law already.
Well, but yeah, I think you want to be in a situation where our zoning ordinance somehow appears to be more restrictive of state law than state law.
And so I, well, I guess what I, what I don't understand about her comment is she says that it's, the paragraph is broken. And then when it is fixed, you might want to add some language about these inspection warrants.
It wasn't broken.
Because she's saying that they have the ability to say no, when actually they don't have the ability to say no.
They don't have the ability to say no.
That's what she's saying, is we're saying, if they're saying, well, there may I, and we're saying they don't, that they have the right to enter the premises.
So we could simply add.
Wait, there's a way, I think about this saying, it's when in the discharge of its duties or, or when they are going to inspect to make it at a reasonable hour and. Not getting really well correct here.
I see what you're shooting for.
Shooting for, by, by just stating that they're going to do it and that they have the authority to come in, they have the authority to do the inspection and.
Well, it's, it's the word is permission of the owner is the, is the problem there. So if you take that out, it just says we have the right, they have, have the authority to enter any reasonable hour, period.
Yeah, but then that would suggest that they can just walk in without any advance notice.
Notice, right.
Provided.
Which they can.
Then they can say provided.
Provided prior notices offered.
Yeah, notices given.
Well, I, I would suggest either.
I'd be right.
We take this out and just reference state law, or we put state law in here. Why do we need to do something other than that?
What does a state law say about the final inspection? Not about the warrant, but about just inspecting?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Because she was saying how there was a warrant that if they deny access. I'm saying, what's the language prior to that, before the denial?
In section two or one?
Well, 155A7 is enforcement authority, so it's section one. The local enforcement agency appointed pursuant to RSA 674, Con 51, shall have the authority to, to enforce the provisions in the state building code, provided, however, that where there is no building inspector, the state fire marshal, the state fire marshal is designated, shall have the authority to enforce provisions to state building code, subject to review provisions contained in 155A10. So this is really just saying that the town has the authority to enforce the state building code. The town chooses not to, the state has that authority. Two, upon the request of the local enforcement agency, state agencies, upon the request of the local enforcement agency, state agencies, boards, and commissions may provide advisory services and technical assistance concerning the building or any construction project in local enforcement agencies, certain sections of that. So it's.
So there's nothing in there about?
It's saying the town can enforce the state building code.
I'm thinking around, just in terms of entering the premises, it's not covered.
Yeah.
It's just saying that, this is the other, which is, does the language say that they, they can't disallow it?
Right. So as Frank suggested, we could simply paste in the last sentence of section three in the RSA, which says, if consent for such inspection is denied or not reasonably obtainable, the local enforcement agency may obtain administrative inspection warrant.
Yeah, I like that.
By 95B.
Yeah. Now, in 150, she just wants to add contractor to the last, nor relieve the applicant or contractor therefrom. It sounds like that's all she wants to do, is add that word. Seems easy enough. Yeah.
So you want to put?
Nor relieve the applicant or.
And or contractor.
And or contractor.
On there.
Yeah, that might be the way, and or. That seems, yeah, not quite a big change.
Applicant and or contractor.
Therefrom. Now, we had talked all along about us putting together some kind of fact sheet for, or working with the selectmen on one or. But just to get out, so that when we come to a public hearing, some education, that we're all on the same page. And, and we're not, that's obvious, we're, this is a pretty divided board and, on this issue. And, but it would be nice if we were united and we knew that we were going to all answer. We could, if we could, if we could sit down and we could agree to, this is what we agree on. And then when we present this, I'd like to present it to the public before a public hearing, because we all know that the same 15 people will come out. And the 700 and some odd voters that are going to vote on it are left in the dark trying to understand what the hell does this really mean? And that's what we've had. So the question that's come up twice before in 2009 and 2000, I don't know what year, last year's, but didn't we already vote on this? Why are we voting again? And that's the first question that's going to come up. And we should be on the same page. We should have an answer. We, and I'd love to not only have an answer, but put it out there and say, here's what's coming up at a public hearing. Here's why we're doing it again. And, and here's what we're, you know, where, why, and.
Well, actually, there's, the language from the last public meeting is said with, I can't quote it, but I, as I recall, it said that, that, that we should pursue fixing the zoning ordinance, which is, and so we are doing what, what we were charged to do by.
And I was going to say, I think that the one thing we're probably, I think we're all on agreement on is that the way we're currently doing it, the authorization that we currently have or don't have is not sufficient. And that we're trying to, if, if the town actually chooses to do inspection, we're trying to provide the proper authority to do, to do so.
I guess I don't agree with that statement. I mean, I think that.
You feel the status quo is?
I, no, no, and I'm not saying the status quo is desirable. But I think the status quo, based on what was voted at town meeting, that, you know, I, I feel comfortable that the selectmen have sufficient authority to do what they're doing now. It's not, I, I, I would agree that it would be preferable to have an amendment to our ordinance to remove the $10,000 and, you know, you know, kind of remove things that otherwise conflict the state law and make it clearer. And, and, you know, again, that we're trying to follow the state law here. So I guess I'm, I'm kind of, I'm not, I'm disagreeing with the statement you made, but I think I agree with the.
That's what I clarified. So I think what you're asking for is, is a reason to explain to people why we're presenting this based on what happened last March, correct?
Correct on that, but also what are we presenting it and, and explain it to them?
Yeah.
Because if you read this, that's hard to understand and then.
Also hard to understand that, because you're, you're saying, guys, well, what did I vote on last year? And here's bringing people current.
Well, yeah, well, I don't think, you know, I mean, personally, I don't think anyone knows what they voted on last year. And, and, and the other thing is just a fact sheet. What are you voting on now? And why is there an option in here? You know, and what does that mean? And so, you know, I'd just like to explain what this means in some kind of getting out ahead of, and whether we do it through e-news, the paper, the, a fact sheet, just so that people understand what is coming up? Why are we doing it again? What are the options here? What does this mean? Because I, I, I'm going to maybe sound stupid here, but I don't mind sounding stupid. I got to the ballot the other day and there were three ballot questions on there. I watch the news every night. I wa, I listen to NPR all the time, all the time. I mean, every day, hours. I never heard of any of those ballot questions.
Me too.
I didn't understand those three ballot questions. And I got out and I felt embarrassed. My wife turned to me and said, I didn't understand, like that to me. And I said, I didn't either. I didn't know what they were. I had never heard of them. Well, I'd hate for us to get there. We're, we're such a tiny town. This is an important issue. It's a very controversial one, but if we could get out ahead and explain, here's what we're doing, here's why we're doing it, here's what we agree on.
I think that the basic understanding of what the state building, enforcement of the state building code entails. You know, we talk about inspections, but it's more than inspections. And I think if there was information that was provided, says, here's what this means, then our ordinance, what we come up with, is meaningful. If you had the background knowledge of what this, what's the enforcement process means, what it involves, then here's the ordinance that does these things. But it's just, that's my thought to it.
So I'm talking education.
Yeah, exactly, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah. Other than, I know legally we, we do it in a public hearing, but.
But they need prior information.
But we get 20 people to the public hearing. And, and it's the same 20 that we, you know, that have been involved in this.
Just a summary of what's taken place, where we're at and what this is.
And get it, get it into e-news. Maybe, you know, if we could work on our next meeting or have it ready for the next, we got a couple of drafts or.
Would, I think that might prove more difficult to.
Well, it might.
We don't have much time, we have one more meeting.
I know, that's it, we're right out of time, but.
Well, there's also, there's also, you know, we have, I think even if we weren't able to, you know, to, to develop some sort of marketing campaign prior to the, the public meetings, it still would be good at least to inform the public prior to the town meeting when they actually vote on it. So I think we do have some time to.
To work on that.
And I was going to ask, I mean, I, I don't know that it's possible, but, you know, if we could, if we could tempt the LGC or the North Country Council to, you know, to do some sort of presentation, you know, sort of from, you know, essentially, we're, we're doing what the state at least is sort of halfway charging us to do. So it might be good to have someone from that state level explain, you know, what, what's the real foundation? You know, what's the real basis of all of this? I, I don't know that they'll do that, although if they felt that they can do a presentation here and have other communities.
You can ask.
Also attend, they might, because.
LGC.
They know, they know that this is a very confusing, difficult thing that everybody's wrestling with.
You can't hurt to ask.
I mean, I, I think there's going, you know, on nearly every aspect of this, there's going to be some, at least little disagreement, you know, amongst us. I don't know.
Oh, sure. Guy, I don't think we're all going to agree, but, but at least we could agree on some things and, you know, and, and I think we do. I think we do agree on some things, we.
Well, I think you can, a factual sheet can be put together. It's not, not an opinion sheet. But this is, this is what state law is. This is why we are making these changes to come in conformance with state law. And then this is the implications. If you vote no on, if you vote yes on this, then we will be, our ordinance will comply much more closely with state law. If you vote no, then we go back to what we have, which is not in compliance with state law. Go with state law.
And then there, another issue beyond the $10,000, I mean, I think, I think we're all agreed with the $10,000 item is, is an issue. Frank, you agree with that, correct? And Bethany Osho, I don't eliminate the $10,000 exemption.
I, yeah, I think that's one of the, one of the, yes, I.
Okay, so, and then a second issue with what we currently are working with, I talked with Jerry when you guys were discussing earlier as to, you know, currently the board selectmen hand those applications and you're discussing, you know, better ways to, to do that. I asked Jerry, well, why don't you just hand them over to the building inspectors since that's what the RSA seem to say? And that's the direction we're headed in with this. And Jerry's answer was that he doesn't feel the board selectmen has the authority to change how it's being done now, especially after the petition we voted on, to continue the way it's being done now. So even though Jerry agrees that the RSA is indicating that it's the building inspector that ought to handle applications, Jerry doesn't feel that the board selectmen has the authority to simply make that change.
But if it's passed as he would.
I think it's, I think zoning ordinance already gives them that authority.
Under what part, Frank?
Part?
Under what part of the zoning ordinance?
Where it says that the selectmen can appoint a building inspector.
But that ordinance was written to enforce only the zoning ordinance.
And that's the problem with that argument. It can't hold.
Well, again, it's, it's, however, you feel the current board selectmen.
That's all that matters.
She's, there's, yeah, there's a concern there. And so it's another fix that we'd be accomplishing by, by making the changes that we're, that we're contemplating. I think fact sheet though, you know, sooner and later, you know, would be, would be great, something that, that in plain English describes what we're doing.
And why we're doing it.
Why we're doing it.
I think if the why is really important, like you said, people vote on things and I think. I think it's all said and done.
To me, the why isn't so much what you said, Sarah. I apologize. Yeah, I don't agree with you on that. You, you know, you were saying the why is because we want to come into conformance with state law. Well, that's part of the why, you know, that.
Okay, that, that's one aspect.
Yeah, one aspect is that we are not enforcing it na, well, we're not enforcing this, we, we, we don't have the authority now to enforce the state building code.
Well, we're bringing, because of the, the $10,000 line, we are, it's not conforming. So, but that's part of the, part of the change. Okay, so conform to state law, and what else? Give me, everybody, give me your reasons.
Well, state law requires that the building inspector position be established with authority to do the listed things. And that's why I think Frank and I disagree on, and that's fine, that, um, what the current zoning ordinance provides authority for.
All right, so we're just making sure that.
We have the authority to enforce the state building code.
Yeah, I think the words are, a mechanism.
I mean, you know, the previous Board of Selectmen felt that we had what we needed.
The LGC.
That the town voted to continue what we have. We have both.
Right, we're just making it.
The attorneys of the LGC, our town attorney, and, and staff people at the North Country Council, don't believe that what we currently are working with is sufficient.
Right. So we're clarifying that.
You might, you might lead out the, the previous Board. No, no, no. The attorney about sufficient, but I think I'm just saying.
I mean, that's what I'm saying.
That is a change.
Okay. So we're giving authority, and, um, you're talking about just exactly what it means, you're saying with the state building code.
I think that's, when we say enforcing the state building code, and it starts again with what it says in the RSA, that everyone will build by that, that's the state directive everyone has to. Separate from that is a mechanism to enforce the state building code, which involves those basic steps. So, you know, there's a two-part process to that. The state says thou shalt, but they left it to the towns to enforce it. And we don't have a, a choice on whether we comply with it. We have a choice on how we enforce it.
Yeah, and little facts like that, people, you know, it'd be good for people to know that, you know, you know, and you, you can better understand what you're voting for. And that's all I want to do, is so people better understand what they're voting for. Because what we came out even last year, we can't agree at the table what we voted for, you know, and we're not entirely sure what did we vote for.
But I, I think it's important that you reference enforcing the state building code and not just inspections, because that's, that's the buzzword that gets everyone lit up.
And, and in that, you, you know, I think, I guess I think it's probably pertinent that, or, or should be in there, that, that whatever the town chooses to do, the state still has the right to do those, to enforce the state building code if they choose so, but.
Through the state fire marshal.
Right. Even if we don't do inspections, the state still has the, the authority to do inspections. It doesn't, it, it doesn't.
You know, I, I, I would love to, for each of us to go, you know, because I'm not really ready in my mind for this tonight, but, uh, each of us to come in at the next meeting with some ideas towards that fact sheet and that.
Email them to me.
Oh, okay.
For some reason, Scott, I think in that last revision, this House Bill 137, I don't know if it's in there, that I tripped across, the, the idea about this, the fire marshal coming, it's at, as I, somewhere I saw, at the request of the town, as opposed at the direction of the fire marshal, somewhere in there.
I know there's a request of the town, but I don't.
I don't know if it's that.
Unless 137 changes things.
I'd have to go back and look, but anyway, if I hear that.
Okay, Jeff.
The one thing we want to do is, if some question with 137, I believe, is that there are exemptions to a permit being required under the international codes, who therefore are part of the state building code, but there's some question whether the fire code allows any exemptions, or does the fire code trump the state building code? In other words, if the fire code trumps.
Life, life safety issues, things?
Right. If the fire code trumps the state building code, any exemptions that we would allow via the state building code aren't really allowable by the fire code.
But is, is the fire code part of it? Have to go back to.
No, it, it talks about that you, uh, you, built by the state building code and the fire code. Those are the two things that's mentioned in 137. But there's also one part in there, said that where there's two things that conflict, if the landlord has the right to pick which one he wants to go by.
Really?
Really?
I thought it was.
It may be a different reference, but it's.
That's weird.
I always thought, I thought one was more strict than that one, was the one that was applied. Like, life safety 101 is more strict than.
I'll have to show you the reference, but it's in that 137.
I sort of, I kind of remember both, actually.
I'm just saying, it just seems, it just seems weird that, that they would have a choice, that's all. Because of everything.
I think the agency has two days to resolve it, and if they don't, the landlord takes the choice. And that does not impact his ability to get an occupancy permit.
Unusual. HB 137 is unusual.
This whole thing is fairly unusual. Any other, while we're here, any other suggestions, just what we want to put out to the public?
Not yet, no.
Yeah, good. Well, that's all I, I want us to do, that. I just don't want somebody else to put this together instead of us.
Yeah, um, but I'll, I'll put a draft together, and any ideas, you know, get to me.
I think just sitting, kidding the key points, only keeping it as simple and as brief as possible.
Yeah, you can raise it, as I said before, I'm not sure.
Well, let me tell you. At the last meeting, we agreed that we would provide an option of, for.
That would be the second option you need to work on.
And so, uh, since I kind of pushed on that, I did develop a, a, a second amendment to vote on that provides that option. I went on a couple of things. My first effort is to say, we need to provide the voter, who's going to live under our direction, every bit of information that we think may be relevant to how he's going to be governed. I had it in a bullet form that appeared to be, probably is confusing, that's the way I operated for a lot of years. So I've changed and gone to a narrative form. And in the logic of putting it together, I thought if we had an organizational chart to say, here's where the things are relative to each other. And I put together a thing that's, uh, is kind of basic. You don't want to know? And again, being a bureaucrat for years, that's the way I. What did you have?
Yeah, I'm looking at something different.
See, don't look over your shoulder.
You did work, you did, we'll find work.
Keep your eyes on your own paper. If you ever told that.
I don't want to have to believe, unfortunately, Beth is not here to verify, believe, last year, about this time, we had come up with a, do we want, you know, a way of giving the voters the option of.
We've been here before.
Full state building code inspection enforcement, and state building code inspection enforcement only for multifamily and commercial, and so, and that this is a belief of.
Okay, what she had come up with.
At that point, you know, not how we should, which is.
And I actually liked her. She did the.
We got to the final version of that.
Well, no, I, I, I'm not sure that this is the latest version of that.
No, I, I don't think we were up to a final version that was something we think we could have done.
No, I'm just, I just, I was just looking at this in, in this base.
Because I think we still have an issue of exactly how to do that, uh, in, in a way that provides all the available options that are available.
And this, and this one, this one, three-fold one. So if you favor local inspections, please vote for either Article 3A or 3B. If you oppose all local inspections, and want only the required state inspections, choose to vote against both articles. So this, in win. Yeah. It's intended to say, you can vote for commercial, multifamily, you can vote for, if done by the town, you can vote for a commercial, multifamily, single family, done by the town, or you can vote for no inspections, done by the town. I guess that the state would do commercial, multifamily themselves, but that just is what we had there last year, so. Any questions, George?
No, it's all right. I put this together, and there's one, I'll pass this on, and explain what it is.
Busy here. You've been busy.
Man, I learned for years how to make paper. And I used as much of, a lot, most of your verbiage that you had already, Sarah. And what this is, uh, this is administration enforcement, and what I left off, this would be for Amendment Two. We had Amendment One that covered everything, that would, all of the state building codes would be enforced for everything. For commercial, one, two families, didn't make any difference. This would be for Amendment, the countering amendment, or the off, the one that offers others, that would be, the first, which I left off in here, 16 would be for commercial and two-family homes. Okay? And then if you look under six and 17, would be for single-family homes. And I say that, for the most part, I used as, just about all of your, your verbiage. The thing that was different, uh, I expanded, I, I left, like, for instance, if you start on the first page, paragraph three and paragraph four and paragraph five, the same information written in a narrative form, as opposed to a bullet form. I expanded a little bit, particularly under paragraph four, of the things that the building inspector has, has the ability to do. And I go back to the point of, I think we need to provide all of the information to the voter to decide how they want to be governed, under what rules.
So, George, I'm not sure I understand the overall layout of this. This, this, does this encompass both the choices?
Yes, yes.
Now, you, I'm not quite sure on your, um, you've got some bold, you've got some italic, you've got some bold italics.
If you just read through and disregard that, because I didn't get it all bold italics in, I done that today, so if, regardless whether it's bold or italics, it's in total.
So, so this is, is also to the amendments to, are we just already approved?
No, this is, we said we were going to put up two amendments.
Oh, we said if we can.
And this is the alternate amendment.
So this, this entire document does not include single-family?
Yes, it does. Section 17.
Right, but we, we haven't drafted that, that was voted on at the last meeting that includes single-family.
That's correct.
And so, what we, what we don't have at the moment is something that does not include single-family.
This is it.
Okay, that's, that's what he's asking.
Yeah, so then what does section 17 do?
That, if you read it, it says, it, you, the state building code is not enforced for single-family homes.
Right, that's what I was asking, is doesn't this document, where does it say that, George?
Well, if it says, section 17, requirements for owner-occupied, single-family homes.
So what you've done is simply to have section 16.
Apply to commercial and.
And then 17 for single, so you've made it more complicated than.
So, and, and again, 17, in your document, this has town inspections of single-family?
No, no.
So that's what I asked before, and that's why I gave it. Your section 17, without reading, I'll paraphrase it, says that, I'm guessing that, that single family are required to conform to state building code, that the town Jackson does not inspect or inspect for.
Except that you're having him inspect for the zoning ordinance.
Right, which they have to.
All right, so you're not.
He has, you have to comply with the zoning ordinance.
So what, in section 17, are these things are.
Well, as I say, some is, some isn't. Just disregard whether it's bold or not, because my administrative skills are lacking in this, so. But if you read on the paragraph 17, too, where it says at the bottom, the owner-occupied, single-family homes are exempt from the enforcement of the state building code provisions in the town zoning ordinance. These owners must comply with all remaining provisions of the ordinance. Now, if that's legally sufficient, I don't know. But that's the intent.
Do you want to say something that the owners must comply with the state building code, although this town is not going to inspect for it?
If you start at the beginning of that paragraph, yeah? It says, under the state building code, requires all building in the state adhere to this code and the fire safety code, low-stakes code, electrical and public codes. You're required, as I said, it, this whole thing, there's two steps. One, the state building code, everyone has to comply with. Two, the enforcement of it is optional by the towns.
Right, where does it say it's optional?
Say what's optional.
I think George is just saying that it's optional.
The RSA is optional.
Doesn't say it.
That's right.
So, so basically what you're doing, George, is rather than simply leaving out single-family inspections in a, in, say, this draft, you're bringing it in in a way that makes it clear that even though the town Jackson doesn't inspect, property owners are still required to conform to the state building code.
And it lays out, you have to comply with the rest of the ordinance. And so it sets up its own entity for a single-family homeowner.
So what happens if somebody has to have an electrical inspection? Are we, they don't do that? I mean, are you, are you trying to eliminate just the building code, or also the electrical phone codes?
I'm not eliminating them.
I'm not eliminating.
So you have to be followed.
The inspection.
If he's not doing the inspection.
The enforcement of it. So you're, this is both not enforcing the state building code. as well as not enforcing the plumbing and electrical codes.
No, no, I'm not saying that at all. I'm saying, as it does in the basic ordinance, that the homeowner is actually responsible, regardless of inspections, I'm saying.
But Frank is saying that the town simply doesn't take on that enforcement activity.
So the town of Jackson would either enforce the state building code nor the.
The ownership.
Nor electrical code.
Yeah.
But presumably we do enforce the fire safety code.
We don't enforce the electrical and plumbing code now.
I, well, we, over ten thousand dollars we do.
Yeah.
But, but, so, well, I'm not quite clear, clear what you're doing with the fire code and the fire safety code.
As with all of the codes, the homeowner is ultimately responsible. We say that in our ordinance, it says it in the state law. Alls I'm saying is, then if the homeowner is responsible for a single-family home, then he's responsible.
Well, I think you've gone far beyond what I thought we voted on.
No, I did not.
I don't think, I don't think people who voted thought we were not going to enforce the fire code.
But who, who in a town that doesn't enforce, say, building code, who would enforce the fire code?
At the moment, our fire chief.
Is that?
We have a fire inspector that works one day a week.
But, you know, there's nothing that exempts the fire code being applied. The fire inspector's still responsible. Alls I said was the state building code.
Well, but then you have in here a fire code, safety code, plumbing codes.
You're required to comply with those. And, as we say in our ordinance, and as the state says, the owner is ultimately responsible. Alls I'm saying is, you have the responsibility laid on the homeowner, give him the authority.
So, for example, if I'm doing some remodeling of my house and I choose not to put in smoke detectors?
Uh.
If you're.
I think, no, no, no. It, you're still required to, to adhere to the state code.
Right.
And if you don't, you know, that's your fault.
That's my fault. But nobody's going to come and inspect me to see if I have.
No, but if you want to live in a house without.
Yeah.
That's your choice.
That's right.
It's insane.
I'm just making, I'm making a bad example intentionally.
Yeah, yeah, right, yeah.
You know, I could say railings, I mean, I could even get into any safety code.
You can use Bosel and, you know.
Yeah, for your studs, if you want to. Good luck on that.
But if you have a contractor do it, he is required to bill by the code.
Right.
And electrician is required, a plumber is required. So it is.
But if I chose to do it myself, you're required.
That's your choice.
And I'm required to follow the state building code.
Sure.
Right, but nobody's going to check on me according to this provision.
That's correct.
To my question, in a town that doesn't enforce the state building code, does someone still enforce the fire code or the plumbing code or electric?
No, not in a single-family.
I believe our inspector enforces the fire code in single-family.
He does presently because it's part of the building code, uh, building inspection process that we have right now. But if this went through, he would not be inspecting any homes.
Well, he doesn't inspect homes now, anyway.
No.
He goes in for inspection.
The inspector does, but not the fire.
Yeah, the fire guy does, too, outside.
Yeah, oh, okay.
They're afraid.
He'll do burners, he'll do electrical, you know, that's kind of his gig.
Okay. Because he's a master electrician.
Right. And the burner's a big thing, too.
Well, wait a minute, doesn't the building inspector do the electrical in all of those?
Not all of them, I don't think.
Well, that's what was done at my house.
Yeah, they both do it. Like, I, I had my house gutted and they both looked at different things, electrical panels and they have, you know, they both said different things.
So that's why we need to change the process.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But also.
Nobody does it one hand, it's doing it.
It, it still comes back to the responsibility of the homeowner, it says that in our ordinance.
But Scott was asking the question was, in a town that doesn't have it, you're asking who doesn't?
Well, I guess what I'm asking is, is that in the eyes of the state, is the building code separate from the plumbing code or electrical code in terms of enforcement? And is, is town enforcement of those codes, if they are separate, required, whereas enforcement is not required?
How are they different, as the state?
No, because in Bartlett, if you build a house and you, there's electrical and plumbing, you don't need to have your house inspected. Conway's same, Albany's same.
No fire chief goes in.
And nobody comes in to inspect the electrical, plumbing at that point. And you're not required to go to the state to do that. The fire code, the plumbing code, the electrical, they really come under the state building code. So it's one. So we either inspect, let's say you build a.
Building code or we don't.
Entire, or we don't.
Right.
And that was one thing that did come from, you turn to the RBC through all this last year, is you really can't pick and choose, and that's where our ten thousand dollars, you either enforce the whole thing or you don't enforce.
But they don't distinguish between the three or four different codes?
So, again, I think what, where George is drafting here goes, I think in most cases, if, if, if a town were going to enforce, take on the enforcement of commercial and multifamily, they was generally, I expect, they would simply not include single-family in the ordinance. And so, by default, single-family would not be enforced. What George is doing is, is going further than that and making explicit that the town does not take on that enforcement activity, but.
You still have to comply.
You still have to comply. Which, yes, personally, I think, does have a, yeah, in one way, there's, there's, there's some clarity there in the sense that it more pointedly indicates what the town, the town does and does not do and what the property owner has to do in any case. On the other hand, I, you know, I think you could argue that there's.
It makes it more confusing.
It's a little confusing because you have two long ordinancees to choose from.
Yeah.
And would need to, to really.
I think this is.
Compare them paragraph to paragraph to see where they differ. I would think that, that if we choose to go this route, really, we really want to make sure that we have some good descriptive paragraph on the ballot, so that, without reading through it and carefully comparing, you know, the two doc, the two ordinances, someone could say, okay, you know, ordinance, you know, you can choose one or two. Ordinance one, this is what it, or amendment one, this is what it does. Amendment two, this is what it does, you know, in a, you know, a single paragraph. So the voter can make an informed decision.
Without having to look at this.
Really having to analyze it.
Yeah.
Well, that's part of the thing that you'd put together.
Right, I, I would, I don't know that it's possible, but I would hope that we can put that, that descriptive paragraph, or descriptive paragraphs on the ballot, so that whether someone sees anything that we put forth beforehand or not, they still have something when they vote.
To understand what they're voting.
Is the whole, I'm, I'm not sure that, right, is the whole ordinance, or the whole amendment go on the ballot?
No, no.
Why not?
It's just, are you in favor of amendment number one?
Is it, does it have to be that way?
I don't know.
You, you can do it either way. I, I think typically we, we, we put in something like, you know, the draft.
Yeah.
But I think typically we'll put in exactly what we need.
I think you need the entire draft of what the.
But you don't, because for the, 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 uh, the flood stuff, because that was so long and it required so many different changes and so many different sections, we didn't.
You posted.
As the council, we didn't put.
But you posted that.
Yes.
Yeah, but, but of eight hundred people, who's going to go read it, that, we knew that.
Oh, and we would certainly post the full documents.
Oh, absolutely.
When, when they.
The question was on the ballot itself, does it need to be, you know, six pages and.
You'd like to read it for that.
When they passed the affordable housing amendment, was it the full amendment or?
I don't recall.
I thought it was on, we just.
It was a page and a half, I don't think it was on the ballot, though.
I thought that was on the ballot.
The full page and a half?
No, no, it's wrong.
Not, yeah. There's no way. I couldn't imagine reading two documents.
Yeah, I've never, similar.
I've never seen a ballot where we had, you know, a page in it, you know, a page of anything or.
As long as it's sufficient information to say what it is.
Yeah, are you in favor of amendment number one, which asks the town to boom, boom, boom? You know, are you in favor of amendment number two, which asks the town to enforce, but not, you know, residential?
And I still, I still don't know what happens when they both pass.
Well, they can't both pass.
Sure, they're both separate amendment questions.
Well, in.
Or, that's why we need an or.
In, in what I had from last year, this did go before Peter Malia. It does say you vote for either one article or the other article. And then if you wanted no inspections, you vote no on both.
Well, now, if you vote no on both, if we go back.
Let's go back to the original, go back to what we had.
Well, we were trying to construct this last year, such that if you voted no on both, that that rid the town of what it currently had, and as well as not enact anything new. And I don't know whether, I'm sure there would have been confusion afterwards as to what people voted on if we'd gone through with this. In this case, we're not offering that third option of nothing. We're simply offering, we're basically saying, the town's going to inspect, the choice is, does it inspect?
Every, enforce, enforce.
Yeah, enforce, not inspect.
The town's going to enforce, the, 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 what we're offering, the choice we're offering is, does the town enforce everything? Or does the town enforce multifamily and commercial? And so then, now the question.
And what if they both get voted down?
We go back where we are.
No, they don't have a choice to vote it down.
What, what, they say no on both?
Yeah, but they have to have a choice.
Yes, they have to have, somebody have, they have to be able to say, no, I like things the way they are right now.
Well, at the last meeting we discussed was that from town meeting, they wanted to have an enforcement process. And, and, and that we said that there were enough people that didn't want a total enforcement. So that's why we said we were going to offer an alternative.
Well, if, if, if.
If they're voting for.
In any case, you have to have.
Yeah, if they're voting for amendment to the zoning ordinance, there has to be an ability to have everything fail. Go back to not amending the zoning ordinance, things are as they are right now.
Right, you're going to have a default.
You have to have that as an option.
Okay. So it's A, B, or none of the above?
Well, and, and we run that, you know, if, if, if we don't offer the choice, we simply offer, here's, you know, a single amendment, then there's still probably a stronger possibility that it gets voted down and elected to the status quo.
Right.
I would say that this, that, that it, but to vote of one or the other is more likely to result in one or the other and not the status quo.
What if neither of them was intended to pass? Do you need fifty percent on all, on one of the amendments? I suspect yes.
We'll run by Peter and see what he says.
Yeah, but I, I mean.
I know what you're saying, I, I agree with you, I mean, you, you have abstain and, you know, have any, you know, you don't have majority.
Yeah, I think, I, well, I said this last month, or I guess two months ago. I, I don't think we've fully thought out what this means, or how to structure it.
Peter may have maybe forgotten.
And I think we need to have that relatively, you know.
And you said two amendments could dilute the majority, is what you're saying?
Well, what happens if, you know, you have forty percent vote for.
Amendment A.
Amendment A, thirty percent vote for amendment B, and thirty percent say no.
Right, so we don't have it.
What happens?
Well, there's a no vote, there are limited no votes.
Only thirty percent voted no, so.
Yeah, A or B, forty, thirty.
You have to be able to say no, as well. So you, the, no, no, no place to the majority of the town to do anything.
Well, it's a question, Peters, whether they.
Have structured this.
Whether an amendment requires a majority to pass, or whether it typically requires.
The one with the highest numbers.
Right.
Well, just, just simple, we're here, so let's just say it requires one fifty percent. And if that's the case, we should structure this as just one thing that you're voting on, right?
You said you need to have a nor.
Well, if it fails and it goes, it goes back.
Well, if we, if we, if we simply say, here's an amendment to enforce everything, then either that's going to get a majority or the, the, we want to leave it the way it is, it's going to get a majority. There's a, you know, there'll be a clear majority. This case, it, it could be that there is no majority, or more than fifty percent for any.
Choice.
Choice, and therefore we would be left with a status quo.
This, we have to run by Peter Malia, how to structure it, and that's.
I mean, maybe it's just whoever, the, whoever receives the highest number of votes, I don't know, I don't know, but it seems.
Something as simple as that.
Quite right.
That doesn't seem right.
I, I would, I, I don't, not sure if I should play psychologist, but I, I would guess that if you, if we were to offer a choice, the likelihood of someone voting no on both is relatively small.
I, I disagree, there'll be people who vote no because they don't want inspections at all. There'll be people who, I, I've heard people who say.
People who vote no, they don't understand.
The zoning amendments no matter what, uh, because they don't talk zoning, or they, all the zoning amendments are too long and they don't understand, so they vote no. So I, you know, you'll get twenty percent no on almost anything, I think.
Wouldn't that make it?
See what Peter says.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, so we'll run by Peter and see the best way to get three options or two, you know, what, what's the, you know, what's.
What time did you start, dude?
Yeah.
Oh, I've been here since six, with Ella.
I'm sure we're going to make much more progress. So, man, I mean, I mean, well, I will, I will make a motion to dissolve, as we were saying. I think it's a, uh, it's a two-minute.
Well, before, before we do that, I will go to Peter and, and discuss that, that majority vote issue. And, you know, I just, again, I.
We could run these by him anyways, I would agree.
Right. But I'd like to, you know, like us to be able to, at the next December meeting.
Nail it down.
Take whatever we have at that point and say, here's, here's what we're going to put forth to the town. We still have opportunity to make changes, you know, based on our own.
Input from the town.
Input and.
The input we get from the public.
I hate to say this, but should we try to schedule two meetings in the next five weeks rather than just one?
I mean, I'm concerned in that, you know, this, what George's just given us just now, and none of us have seen this before. And, you know, we're getting down to the wire, if we, if we, from the schedule you gave us, we have to have that.
Probably add a work session in there somewhere.
Well, we can, the, the question is, we can. We can, uh, can either schedule a work session before the, the regular assembly meeting, or we can, we can.
Let's come to the December meeting and decide if we need a work session or.
Shall we try to do the December meeting starting at six, so we have more time to, to consider things?
I would love to start earlier.
And we're still going to end up going to nine-thirty or something, yeah.
Yeah, you're not getting out of it.
Can I, since they were in a meeting?
I, I have no problem starting earlier, just in general, but.
Yeah.
Well, let's, let's go to the December, let's do the December meeting instead of the rest.
And then we can schedule a work session or two.
Well, we'll have some time in December, we'll have some time in January.
Yeah.
Have another meeting before we need to do a public hearing.
In January.
We, we do have Christmas and New Year's in there, so that, that.
Yeah, we're on Sustay Poppy Day. Where is that, where are your poppies?
Flanders Field.
What's that?
In Flanders Field.
Yes.
Where's, is there a poppy day?
It's the same as ours today.
Yeah.
So, where is that?
The hour, the love day of the eleventh month. This, although I guess now we're.
So in, in, in Britain.
It's poppy day, or amendment day. It's Poppy Day, or November Day.
Just last, like, last week?
The 11th of August.
Because in Britain, everyone was wearing what I thought was a Poppy.
Yeah, Canada also, that's a Monday.
Yeah.
And I didn't know what that was at all, like, the newscasters and everything had a little pin on it, I thought it was a Poppy, I didn't look it up or anything, I was like, well, that's...
We digress.
We have a motion to adjourn?
We do.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Third.
All right. To answer your question, Scott, earlier, if you look at the demographics for Teresa's, is that the population of...